Good evening to everybody. Hello, council, town staff, our illustrious and talented town attorney, and everybody else that is here in attendance tonight. We appreciate you coming. If we can call the roll, please. And just as a confirmation, we're very excited about our newest acquisition with regards to our town clerk, Russell Muniz. This is his first meeting as the official town clerk in the Town of Southwest Ranches. Russell, welcome. It's great to have you. A pleasure and look forward to having you for a long time, that's for sure. But welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
You call the roll, please?
Yes, I will, Mayor. Councilmember Doug McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Freddie Fisk Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Steve Brightcrutz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gary Jablonsky?
Here.
Mayor Jeff Nelson?
Here. We all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also want to recognize, there's Cleat, our new town engineer is also in the audience tonight. We're just thrilled and excited about having you, Cleat, and know you're going to do an outstanding job on behalf of the Town of Southwest Ranches. Again, welcome. Okay, Marty, listen, I'm excited about this presentation, that's for sure. Item number three.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. For the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, your town financial administrator. Tonight, before I formally introduce Bella Sherman, CPA and Director, who is here tonight from the independent auditing firm of Markham LLP, I am pleased to provide you all and the residents the town's comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as a CAFR, for the fiscal year ended 2013. Specifically, a few key favorable financial highlights I wish to report are, and by the way, town clerk has some extra copies, and we have some copies in the back, town hall copies. It's in your agenda package, and the plans are to put it on the website tomorrow, first thing in the morning. The independent auditor's report, which I'm sure Bella will elaborate more on later during her presentation, reflects an unmodified, also known as a clean audit opinion, which is the highest assurance given that the town's financial statements were prepared in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. A clean audit opinion should give comfort to the town council and the citizens of our community that the town's financials are being accounted for and reported properly. A second factor is our town's total assets exceed our liabilities by $50,052,533. This analysis is comparable to a balance sheet in the private sector, and we are obviously in a surplus net position overall. During 2013, I would like to congratulate and acknowledge all town staff who finished the year in a fiscally responsible manner that created net position increases in both the total of all the town's governmental activities in the amount of $1,303,844 and the business type activities, which is our solid waste fund. We only have one fund, business type, the solid waste fund. And that increased $91,961. It is important to mention that this is the third consecutive year of positive net position increases in both fund types. A third factor I'd like to elaborate on is our unassigned fund balance. It's a big concern of everyone. This is otherwise known as our reserves. Our general fund increased $964,374 to equal $3,458,623, and it represents slightly over 41 percent of total general fund expenditures and transfers. Therefore, the town continues to far exceed the minimum unassigned fund balance as recommended by the Governmental Finance Officers Association, that's the GFOA, of only 15 percent. Ours is 41 percent. The recommended is only 15 percent. Finally, we are proud to report to you all and the residents that the independent auditor's report on internal controls over financial reporting, that would be on page 85 to 87, and the management letter, in accordance with the rules of the Auditor General of the State of Florida, and that's on page 88 and 89, identify no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. This is a major milestone since it's the first time accomplished by your town management. Accordingly, I would like to acknowledge the following staff members of a special committee whom assisted finance in this accomplishment. If you're in the audience, please rise. Number one is Peter Brill, our town controller. Hold the applause till later. Let me finish announcing all of the names. Mara Semper, our accounting clerk. Sandy Luongo, our general services manager. Emmeline McCord, our community services coordinator. And last but not least, December Laurentano Haynes, our parks recreation and open space coordinator. So thank you very much, all of you. That's all I have. Now let me introduce and welcome your next presenter from Markham LLP. Bella Sherman has more than 20 years of experience providing accounting, auditing, and advisory services for a wide range of entities, including governmental. As a CPA and Director in Markham's LLP's Assurance Division, her primary responsibilities include onsite supervision and review of audit engagements to ensure they are prepared in accordance with professional and firm standards. Ms. Sherman provides guidance to clients ranging from complex accounting issues to general business and accounting developments. She also has significant experience in the evaluation of internal controls. With that introduction, I'd like to ask Bella to come up tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you. So I'm actually here to talk about the CAFR, which is the comprehensive annual financial report that the town has been issuing. And so you have a little extra, you have an introductory section and a statistical section that's added there to give you additional information. One of the things that happened this year is that the AICPA came out with the clarity standards to make it clearer for those auditors and what they wanted to see. And what they did is they came out with a new opinion. I think that if you looked at page one, two, and three, you'd see that looked quite different than something you've seen before. And so it clarifies management's responsibilities and the auditor's responsibilities. And as Marty said, you had what now is called an unmodified opinion instead of an unqualified opinion. Change in terminology, but it means clean, no problem. One of the things that we do have this year is we had what's called an emphasis of a matter. The GASBIs have been very busy with their standard setting, and they came out with this new framework. And so we don't just have assets and liabilities, or assets minus liabilities equals net assets. Now you have these deferred inflows and deferred outflows, and so that gives you net position. So net assets has gone away. It didn't have a significant impact, but if you look at the statements in the package, you'll actually see that you did have a deferred inflow. One of the things that we tell people, if they don't want to read, you know, CAFR, which could be 100 pages, this one's like just under 100 pages, to go to the MDA. Now that's something that your department, the finance department, actually prepares, and it actually gives you the highlights. And that's basically what Marty was giving you. If you go to page four, it's really giving you those critical highlights of what it is that happened in the current year. The other thing that we actually like to direct people to is at the very end of it, which is on page 13, and it actually talks about the summary of economic conditions and where you find yourself. One of the other things that we're required to do is actually go through our letter, which I have, which was sent. And this is a required under auditing standards that we communicate this. And I believe everyone got an email from us because we're now required to do the submission. We're required to send it to you, actually. So you'd see in that, the significant audit findings, and basically, we're talking about all the new standards that there were. I just talked about 63, and that's the one that added deferred inflows and outflows and net position. They now have 65, and 65 tells you what's a deferred inflow and a deferred outflow because we always thought of them as assets and liabilities. There was also 62. People used to think that that was actually just for business type activities, but it's much broader. When the FASB came out with their codification for commercial, the GASBIs said, oh, we need to do something, and they codified all of the FASBs into GASB62. And they have a significant impact, but didn't specifically impact how you account for things in the town. There was also another one, 61, on component units, and whether they're blended or discreetly presented, and that determines how you present them in your financials. Yours are blended, and it did not change. That's the volunteer fire. So in this letter, it says that, you know, there were no disagreements with management. We didn't encounter any problems. In fact, they were great. They were extremely helpful. Everything we needed, we received timely. Did a lot of work. And that there were no matters that we actually felt that we needed to report. There were no disagreements, as I said, and everything, they were extremely wonderful to work for. And worked very hard.
Nothing to report?
No.
That's unheard of, isn't it?
Well, Marty had mentioned that because there have been in the past, there had been the issues related to potential capital assets, and it clearly, but no, they worked very hard and diligently, and we did not have any issues. Again, we're auditing to make sure that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and we had no issues, which was wonderful. Does anyone have any questions? I didn't go into the numbers. I know Marty did the highlights, and I know you have a presentation, another one.
Counsel, any questions? Just to recognize, you know, Marty and your staff, and just some of the things that you were able to accomplish this past fiscal year. First of all, thank you for your diligence. I know you spent, you and your people spent a lot of time here going through all the components of our budget and reviewing all the information that you are required to review that was provided you by our staff. So I know that there was a lot of due diligence and a lot of conversation, a lot of cooperation amongst both parties. But the creation of a surplus, assets exceeding liabilities by over $50 million, during 2013, net position increased $1,303,844 and $91,961 for governmental and enterprise activities respectively, which is remarkable in itself. Full revenue increase for the fiscal years was almost $654,000, and we talked, I mean, it talks about that in here, about the two residential properties held for resale. Audited expenditures in the same property tax supportive fund were under budget in every area by $482,000. That's remarkable. The majority from general government, $179,000, public safety, $159,000, community services, $72,000, coming in favorably under budget. So all the major categories were under budget. That's remarkable, Marty and staff, and Andy and all those associated with making the contributions to ensure that we're in this position. Just remarkable. Let's see, revenues over expenditures of $1,136,000, and when added to net favorable transfers of $82,000 equals $1,219,693 is a positive net change in the fund balance. And what's even more remarkable, and I starred this one, is the fact that this is the first time that there were no identifiable material weaknesses or deficiencies in internal controls or otherwise. First time in 14 years in the history of the Town of Southwest Ranches. That is remarkable. Big round of applause. And also, again, the town received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, also known as the GFOA, covering fiscal year 2012. And again, that's something that's very, very difficult to get, and I know how hard you worked to ensure that you got that designation, Marty, and it's just remarkable. But to you, your staff, the things that are all a part of this report, it's just, it's remarkable. Congratulations on a job well done. Congratulations to the town staff. Congratulations to Andy Burns. This was a remarkable audit, probably one of the best that we have ever had in the history of the town. And again, a confirmation that there were no deficiencies or weaknesses. And again, this is the first time in 14 years for the Town of Southwest Ranches. So congratulations. Job well done.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, I'd like to make a comment if I could. Ladies and gentlemen, what you're looking at here is a product of a team effort that's involved several years to get to this point under Marty and Andy's tutelage, and they really put a team together, and this isn't just them working, this is the staff working in cohesion. And it's really nice when you have all the ships sailing in the same direction, for lack of a better metaphor. And when you get a clean audit like this and you can look at it and all the numbers come together and you can tell what's going on, it's really a pleasure, you know, to do that. I think I was able to go through this in under an hour, which usually never happens, you know, prior to that. So it's a real credit to the team effort and your leadership, both you and Andy. Marty, thank you.
You know, absolutely. Freddie?
Yeah. Marty, I'm looking on page seven, where we jumped from $16 million to $45 million. And it says in there that the, it was due, we've jumped at $33 million in major increase of fiscal year related to director after reporting of infrastructure. Explain that to me a little bit, please.
Certainly. That goes back to another GASB, as Bella was mentioning, 62, 63, 65. Well, back in 2004, they had a principle number 34 that required the town to report their capital assets in infrastructure in 2004. The big jump from 2004 to 2005 was the actual infrastructure of the town, the roads, the streets, the highways, the parks, that a study was prepared and actually quantified for the town that was required for compatibility pursuant to generally accepted accounting principles. That was the big jump.
Would part of that be the $23 million that we got from grants, I mean, from the $450 million prior county thing, where we obtained something like $23 million worth of property for parks? Is that where that big jump is?
That could have been a major component of the increase. I could meet with you later to go over the details of the jump.
But does anywhere in here show the $15 million worth of debt that we picked up? In other words, we have to redo those parks, and we're sitting there with $15 million worth of promised things that we haven't done. Is that reflected anywhere?
Yes, it is, because this is your net position, which has your assets less your liabilities. So in these numbers reflect your debts that associated with the assets.
Because if you look, it's a glorious picture. But I've been here since the start. I wasn't on one of the councils, but, you know, I didn't know we was in this good a shape. You know, I mean, if we are, we're trying to find some money to do some roads and everything. We got all this money, you know.
There's two things that GASB 34 did. In the past, prior to GASB 34 being implemented, you had governmental funds and you didn't pick up your capital assets. So if you look at the governmental funds, you will not see, you will see a different picture in your general fund, that type of thing. What they did is they required you to then do full accrual accounting, and that's what you have actually on page 15. So when you're talking about how much cash you have, if you look on page 15 at the very top, now, again, we're looking at the end of September, you can see that there's $4,007,007. The net position includes your net investment in capital assets, which used to be called capital assets net of related debt. And that's not spendable. It's not in cash itself. It's just, what you have is what is unrestricted, and that's what Marty was calling your reserves. But when you look at actual cash in the bank able to be spent, you're actually looking at the top cash number.
Counsel, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, see you none. And again, Marty just accolades. And, you know, we talk about how thorough, how relentless you are with regards to ensuring that things are done right, that you make sure that we get all the information to point that sometimes people have a tendency, I guess, to take it the wrong way. But we know that, you know, that's commitment, that's dedication, that's a confirmation that this is something that you do an outstanding job on behalf of the Town of Southwest Ranches, and we couldn't be happier. And again, to you and Peter and the rest of the staff, Andy, just absolutely thrilled to death. I think this is probably one of the best audits that we've had in the history of the Town of Southwest Ranches. And again, without having any material weaknesses, deficiencies, the first time in 14 years from a historical perspective, has never been done, is remarkable in itself. But congratulations on an outstanding job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need that the, at this time, the town council introduce, then accept, the motion, the comprehensive annual financial report as audited by our independent external auditors, Markham LLP, for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2013, including the communications to those charged with government's letter dated March 14, 2014. Thank you.
I make a motion to introduce that as.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Any members of the public wish to comment on this audit? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, if there are any additional questions, comments, or concerns, call the question, please.
Excuse me. Councilmember McKay? Yes. Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yeah, just a minute, Jeff. I seen a hand up, and we was asking for people. Jim, Jim, did you want to speak?
Yes, I did. I wanted to ask.
Come on up, Jim. Come to the, I apologize, I didn't see you.
Back a few years ago, when the banks were all collapsing, they changed the.
If you'll speak on the mic, that way we can.
They changed the valuation standards, the capital assets. You familiar with that? The tier one capital ratios?
It's not Q and A.
The accounting standards. Now, you're talking about GASB, which is government accounting, which I don't know nothing about. But in terms of valuation of assets, could it be possible, there's been a change in the way you value assets?
Hey, Jim, if there's a question or a comment, please, go ahead, and then we'll let them answer it. I'm not going to go back and forth with regard to question and answers. She, I think she heard what your question was, and she'll answer it for you. Is that the only?
Follow what I'm saying?
Is that the only question you have?
Could some of the valuation be attributed to changes in standards for evaluating assets?
Okay, Jim, thank you.
You are required to determine with fair value. We tend to use fair value for investments, cash, cash is cash, so whatever it is, that's the fair value. When you come to capital assets, your long-term assets, it's basically the value in use that is determined. If you're able to use those assets and they're generating what they're supposed to, i.e. revenue, you have a building and that type of thing, you do not go and look for impairment. If you realize there was an impairment, then you would record that impairment as a loss in the current year that you determined that there was, and then you would never write it up.
Thank you. Again, Jim, I apologize, I didn't see your hand. Any other, again, I closed public comment because I didn't think that there was any comment. Anybody else in the public wish to comment on this audit? Again, see no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, counsel, as a result of that question, any additional question, comments, or concerns? We have a motion in a second to approve. Call the question again, please. I apologize.
Councilmember McKay? Yes. Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
I just want to know how you're going to top it next year.
Yeah, that's right.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes, absolutely. Congratulations again.
Thank you all.
Okay, item number four. Les, I see, is here and going to do a presentation, a fire operational study. Andy, is Andy? Any comments?
No, actually, Mayor, I don't. Les Adams is our consultant from PSSI. As you all know, he's been working on our fire operational study. He was here last night, presented the fire advisory board, and he's here to share that with you as well. As we've talked about in the past, and council has expressed interest in tasking the fire advisory board with bringing recommendations back to you, but, so he was, Les was here to share this with them, but I did want to give him the opportunity to share his presentation with you as well while he's here in town.
Thank you.
Just give me a second.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Good to see you, Les.
Where do I point this?
Just right to the laptop here. Is it advancing? No? If it's easier, you can take the microphone out of there and maybe get closer to it. Might work a little bit better.
Okay.
Not, I can advance it for you. See if remote's on. Sorry. Something's not powered up. It's got batteries. I don't know, it just popped out, though. Yeah. It was working a second ago. It might need batteries. I'll advance it for you.
I guess I'm going to have to say next from time to time. In any event, thank you for the time, and I appreciate the opportunity to present. Some of the information from the report, it's 188, or 180-page report as it stands today, that covers the scope of services that I'll review with you in a minute. I have a few slides. I have a few slides I'd like to go through initially to talk about the corporation and you can go ahead and advance that.
Unintentionally went to the end.
Are you sure that was unintentional to go to the end? Just a few places, I'm with Public Safety Solutions, by the way. I'm the president of the company. Been doing this kind of work for 30 years after I had my active career in a county fire department in Maryland. I've done work for more than 40, 140 clients in the locations that you can see there and they're only partially marked. List of a few agencies we've assessed. This study was done by myself. Lower left is John Best, who's the former chief of Walt Disney World Fire Department. And the gentleman on the right, lower right, did all of the maps and graphics that you'll see in the report. His name is Bob McNally and he's an urban planner and GIS expert. The corporation has a philosophy, open and honest assessments, conducting objective approaches, valuing the customer input, to name a few. And of course, in the fire department, we value safety first for the customer and the provider. Consider laws and establish standards. And we remain mindful of customer service and we try to build on the strengths of the existing fire departments. And most importantly, provide constructive recommendations. We're not college professor type. We don't, we do write some books like this one, but we keep them at a level that it's constructive and make constructive recommendations. As you know, the scope of the project is primarily four. And you asked us to identify options and in some cases, make a few recommendations. But the options relating to having your own standalone fire department, eliminating the outside contractor, that as you know, is the Davie Fire Department today, maintaining the current contract, fire and EMS services, maintaining existing outside contractual service with the volunteer fire department. And the fourth area that you asked us to look at was identifying other viable models or model combinations, which we identified in a later chapter of the report. The process that we followed with the report is typical of the work that we do and that we initially do a lot of data collection. I won't go through the list of all of the data that we asked for, but trust me, it was lengthy. We go through a period of interviews of many people that are involved with the fire department and the service itself. Do onsite observations, go to the fire stations, become very familiar with the town itself. Analyze all the data that we collect in all of the areas that are needed in order to deal with the scope of services. Do comparative analysis, including benchmarking with national standards and principles and practices and including the insurance services office. And then we identified alternatives and recommendations, which is the bulk of the report that was written and produced the report. And finally, the eighth step is what I'm doing tonight, which is presenting a briefing on the report itself. A few key points regarding the report. We haven't worked for this fire department or been a volunteer. What you see is a result of a snapshot that essentially we took in time. And we developed our own professional opinions and considering standards and practices, as I mentioned. The town should take input initially. We suggest a 60 to 90-day period and consider the options that we identify and implement with appropriate assessments, the selected options that you choose to proceed with. I'd like to show you a few of the graphics that are in the report. I know many of you may not be able to see the detail of these, but this is the base map, as we call it. The white area in the center, of course, is the town that you're well familiar with. We conducted a risk analysis and we looked at population densities. The yellow area is the most populated of the town and the darker yellow is the least. I apologize, you can't see this, but it lays out the population by age group within the town. Based on the information that we had, the housing occupancy within the town was 6% renter occupied, 6% vacant, and I think that's 88%, yeah, owner occupied, which is not surprising. We looked at your land use and this map, when you get, when you look at the report itself, identifies the various land uses. We did a workload analysis going back to 2008. This shows fewer calls now than previously, as you can see, but that's really not the trend that occurred. You had several service providers during that time period and we believe that each one had a different criteria for categorizing calls. But you'll see that fire, other, and medical calls are categorized by year. Generally, at this point, somewhere between 650 and 800 calls a year. We provide you with a one-year, 2013 picture of monthly workload. And as you can see, generally, March, July, and September seem to be somewhat of the busier months, although it's not a tremendous difference. We also show you a picture of your 2013, 11 months of 2013 workload by hour of day. And not surprising that around 5:00 in the afternoon is typically the busiest time. And this gives you a workload forecast through 2013. Slight increases each five-year period. As you can imagine, response times is an important part of assessing the quality of service delivered. Some of the maps that I'll show you in a minute and the report goes into great detail about response times, projected response times as well as actual. But we look at response times for fires and EMS. And of course, for fires, flashover, I'm sure you've heard of that, which is when a room flashes over totally and fire, generally occurs within six to nine minutes. And firefighters want to get there before flashover occurs because it's, takes much less to put the fire out than it does once flashover occurs. So, the standards that exist and the goals that are followed generally are, show you in a minute what they are, but they shoot for getting there before flashover occurs. So, for fires, at six to nine minutes before flashover occurs and for EMS, in the case of a heart attack patient, the goal is to get there within four to six minutes. Nationally, the criteria that's used is five minutes response time total that includes turnout time, which is the time between when the call is actually dispatched until the units arrive on the scene. This is the response times by call type for the year. And it shows in the red, the volunteer department, in the blue, Davie. And generally, their response time is an average of over six minutes. Some of the selected recommendations I'd like to address. One of the chapters, of course, is to identify the criteria that we use to measure and to assess each one of the options. So, that chapter includes, in the areas that are important to this particular assessment, criteria from the various national standards that exist. And obviously, we suggest that the criteria be considered in the implementation of the selected fire and EMS services delivery models. And it's a 28-page chapter that addresses and explains the standards and then discusses in summary 24 specific criteria areas and the extent that they're met today for you to be aware of and look for the future in terms of each one of the options. Of course, one of the areas that we looked at that related to all options was the fire station locations. And this particular map shows in 2013, the service demand from the existing stations. Service demand meaning the, where the calls were concentrated. The orange, there's three general orange areas, pinkish-orange, maybe you might call it, but those are the busier areas. And the yellow are less busy and the green areas are much less busy. When you get a chance to look at the report, you'd be able to see that the orange areas are up to 87 calls in the year. So, it gives you a number of calls in terms of a range for geographic areas. This is a travel time chart. The green is the quickest travel time. And again, this shows your current stations. The yellow is 5 minutes and 60 seconds or more. And the orange area around the circumference area is seven minutes or more. So, this is your current stations. You'll see to the left, to the west, that there's area that is less covered than where your current stations are located today. And the fire station location chapter addresses travel time in great detail and it gives you several options to consider in terms of fire station locations. This is one of the scenarios and you'll see the greenish area that extended off to the left that I'll discuss a little bit later. We refer to that as a second station. If you can see this map, it of course is a street map and in the white area, you'll see certain streets that are shaded in red. The insurance services office has a standard of coverage of 1.5 mile distance between engine company locations. And this shows you that along the interstate, Davie Station 91, where it's covered and then up along Griffin, where a lot of the streets are shaded, that's your current fire station. And again, to the west, there's area that's not, does not meet this standard. Some of the options that we suggest for fire stations is to, first off, all of this response time is based on information that we got obtained from the Broward Sheriff's Office Dispatch Center. And we discovered that not in all cases are actual addresses and locations being entered into the dispatch system. So, that's an area we suggest as a broad area be looked at that would assist in the future to make sure that this kind of analysis could be done easier. We also suggest that you consider separating what is Station 82, which is your volunteer location, from Station 112, which is the Davie Resources, the engine and rescue unit. They're both co-located today and we suggest that one of the options you might consider is to separate them so that you could make better use of the resources if you consider, if you continue with the current approach to having Davie and the volunteer department. And that's where a consideration of an additional station in the west is suggested to improve response time. As to apparatus, we suggest that you develop and implement an apparatus replacement plan that is detailed and based on standards. And in our view, you should consider replacing the 1995 Pierce pumper that is nearly 20 years old at this point, if you're going to continue with the current model. One of the other options you asked us to look at was a town fire department, a freestanding paid town fire department. And the options that we lay out from the chapter, the chapter includes a substantial amount of description of what this fire department would look like, what services it would provide, how it would be organized, how many stations it would operate from, and it costs out a town fire department. So, we're suggesting that initially, you consider the services delivery and related estimated costs of a standalone town fire department. We say that because when you read the chapter, you'll understand that it's not cheap to set up your own fire department. And in fact, it's very costly, substantially more than your services are costing today. So, step one would be to consider whether you're interested in going down that, down that approach. The second is that if you do select this option, that you develop and implement a detailed budget and implementation plan. So, you take the estimates that we put in the report and develop those further if you choose to go down this, down this roadway, which fairly clearly, based on our observation of your budget, is probably not the option that you'd be interested in. But we laid it out for you so you'd see what it would cost and what it might look like. Another option was to continue the contract services. And we suggest that you consider utilizing the current Davie Town contract as a model contract for the future if you choose to continue with contract services. It appears to be a good contract from our point of view and fairly comprehensive. We do have one suggestion to make regarding that contract, when it comes time to renew the contract, that we think you should look at. And that is to consider, the current contract will complete five years and three years. So, it envisions being renewed every five years and we think that's a good timeframe to stick with. We also suggest that you look at having a minimum staffing for Davie of three staff members on pumpers and two staff members on a rescue or ambulance. Today, the staffing is only three people, which means that they can only, from the station, can only handle one unit response at a time. And it seems to us that service delivery could be much better if both units were staffed, both the pumper as well as the rescue ambulance. So, that's a prime consideration and option that we think you should consider. So that's a prime consideration and option that we think you should consider when appropriate. The other, within the contract, it calls for response time to be assessed and reviewed from time to time, but it really does not establish a criteria. And the National Fire Protection Association Standard 1710, which you likely have heard of, has suggested response times for paid as well as paid and volunteer departments. And so we think that when it comes time to renew the contract with Davie or another contractor, that you consider being more specific as to response times. The fourth option that you asked us to look at was volunteer services options. Of course, you have the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Rescue Department that's been in operation for quite a number of years. So we make some suggestions to you and to them as it relates to their continuation. One is to modify the mission statement to make it fit exactly what the service delivery is today as well as what it should be into the future. Another recommendation or option is to consider maintaining the teamwork or contractual volunteer fire department services delivery between the contractor and the volunteers, to consider maintaining that teamwork. And the third item is to consider contract and volunteer resources responding from a separate fire stations. In other words, this is the concept of a second fire station in the west if the team approaches to be continued. Our thinking is that if things continue the way they are today, it would be, make better use of the resources if they were separated and could provide a better coverage of the For the volunteer department, we provide a chapter that goes into some detail about volunteer recruitment and retention and some recommendations for them that might help them to enhance getting more volunteers and retaining them for a longer period of time. It's a national problem, getting and retaining volunteers. And so we suggest some of the things that are in this chapter for consideration. Also, you may not have thought about it this way, but your current contractual approach is a form of cooperative services delivery where you have an adjacent municipal fire department providing your services under contract. There are other regionalization options and opportunities. So we include a chapter on regionalization and cooperative services delivery, sort of as an education and thinking that you might build on what you have today. There are many benefits, I won't go through these, many benefits to cooperative services. It is a national trend because it becomes, makes it more cost-effective to produce the services and the service itself can be improved through cooperation. In that regard, we encourage full implementation of closest available mutual aid when feasible. We understand that municipalities aren't always prepared to work together in this manner, but if the time comes when you might find yourself in a situation where you might work out an arrangement with your neighbors where they might respond sooner, it could provide better and reduced response times. We include a suggested timeline. Although you can't read it, the first three items of the timeline are for you to, essentially, you're starting the process tonight, to ask for input and suggestions. And of course, you have a fire advisory board that you've asked to provide a review as well as suggestions. And for a 60 to 90-day period, you listen and then make adjustments to the proposal and then make some decisions on the options that you want to pursue. And the rest of the two-page timeline is actually on a subject-by-subject basis, a timeline for the primary recommendations of each one. There are, of course, a number of returns on investment, enhanced services delivery, improved management, improved pride in service, improved training and reduced costs through the implementation of some of the appropriate options that we outlined for you in this And of course, through cooperative services, we suggest a seamless approach to services delivery and that you consider model recommendations and consider relevant input and make an informed decision based on what's best for the customer. And with that, I'd like to conclude my comments and I appreciate your time and I'd be welcome, would welcome any questions that you might have.
Sure. Counsel, any questions? Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Les. I appreciate the overview. I'm actually going to ask a question. You had given the presentation to the fire board last night.
Yes.
And I wanted to bring out a point that came up last night, so just along that line. Moving forward, so obviously, the next step is in the towns' court to start making some decisions based on what you provided here.
Right.
And what you've done is not really made a particular recommendation, but laid out some options for us to investigate. What, as far as, as we investigate those options and we begin to dig a little bit deeper into it, what's your availability or the availability of your organization to assist us and is there any extra charge for assisting us in kind of digging into those options?
Well, the contract includes a year of essentially telephone consultation. But it's our experience that with a study like this, you likely need more assistance than that. So we would offer, and it would depend on how much work was involved, what you needed to have done, but we offer technical assistance. And for example, I'm working on technical assistance for Pawtucket, Rhode Island, quite a different place than Southwest Ranches. But I helped them develop an implementation plan. I worked with their implementation team that the mayor set up to develop the goals and objectives. And the fire chief has a group of officers that I work with to help them develop those things that need to be developed from the fire department's perspective. So it most likely is, technical assistance for implementation is most likely what you will need and we would just need to discuss to what extent and how quickly you wanted to proceed.
Right. And I guess what I'm, and I appreciate that and I think that makes sense. To me, the, I guess, the gate there is the implementation versus the investigation and understanding of what you've done in this study.
Yeah, right.
And so questions that come up as far as different options and how you arrived at different conclusions and recommendations and that we'll be able to contact you by phone and be able to do all that clarification.
Yes, that's right.
And then if we choose to pursue different options at that rate and implement, then that's a different...
A different ballgame, yes.
All right, good.
Yeah, sure.
Gary? Yeah, a lot of information here, Les, a lot of reading. For those of you that don't know, this is the report. It's huge.
Midnight reading.
And I've gotten about halfway through it so far. Let me ask you this, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Sure.
If you had to pick one out of all those options, what would it be, based on your knowledge of what you had, because that's really what we were looking for.
I would not recommend that you change substantially from your current model. It's most likely the most cost-effective and you get a lot of service out of the contract that you have with Davie. There may be some tweaking of the contract that would be appropriate. For example, I suggested the staffing improvement that would really enhance your services delivery. And also, along with that, to take a look at the volunteer department and see how best they can fit in to work as a team in some manner where there wouldn't be duplication of effort and their expertise would be utilized. They've been an effective organization for many years. And so that's essentially what I would suggest if you were putting me on the spot.
Which I am. But you're basically saying the model we have right now is probably the optimal model.
I believe so, yes.
At this point?
Yes.
Okay. And you don't think that we need another fire station or are you...
Well, that's a decision that could be implemented within the current model, either with the volunteers or with Davie, a second station. But you would need to look at the workload in the west end and how important it is to provide coverage and what the costs are. We provide you in the fire station locations chapter some information on and project the potential cost of an 8,000-square-foot substation that might go out there at some point in time. And we put this together for the next 10 or 15 or 20 years for you. So we're not saying that you need a second station immediately.
Okay.
If you have all the spare money that was just talked about, you might want to build a new station. But in any event, it's a consideration and implementation would identify, the implementation plan that would be put together for you or with you would identify when and if and as it relates to the second station.
Okay, thank you.
Freddie?
Yeah, really, I'll be real truthful with you, it wasn't what I expected. I was hoping that you would come back and tell us, I know you all made a lot of suggestions and everything.
We did.
And I don't know if you said it tonight, I've had the opportunity to hear you twice.
Yes.
I heard you say it last night. The only definite statement I've heard so far is we can't afford a standalone fire department.
Yeah, that's pretty clear.
Correct. In my opinion, the only way a town this size can operate is relying on other towns to help us.
Which is a good thing, you know.
The best contract we've ever had was the first contract when Davie did have and Broward County did have because we was able to utilize two existing stations.
Right.
In other words, if you go to stations already built, we're running, now maybe I'm wrong in this thing, we're only running about three major fires a year. That's not about what I've seen, I'm not positive of those, but all figures. We know where the trouble is in EMS.
Sure.
But we have to get the opportunity, like unfortunately, we're not too friendly with Pembroke Pines. This would be, to me, would be our option, would be Pembroke Pines has a station on the west side of our town, Davie has a station on the east side of our town. Those people have to maintain those stations anyway.
Yes.
And so in our first contract, they did, they came in a little, Davie was very low and everything, but it worked. To me, that's what we, to my opinion, is what we should be working towards, is trying to come up with a way that we can look to our neighbors to help us out. Because I know, I'll be very truthful with you, if I knew what I knew now, I wouldn't talk about forming this town because the police and the fire is absorbing all our money. But it's two things we have to have. There's no way you can do without them and we got to have adequate. I'm not looking for no chief, even one of them.
And that's typical of municipality.
Yes. So it's just a problem that we have to work out that, and I was hoping maybe you would give us more of a definite lead towards that now.
Well, we did.
I went through this book.
We did.
And there's a lot of stuff you gave us in this book, but truthfully, we had all that before. You know, we knew all this stuff that you told us was there.
Right.
So maybe we just didn't tell you what we wanted, but...
No, I was told to identify the options.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think when you do that, the, as it did, the approach that makes more sense generally comes out in the wash, so to speak, and we think that's what happened. You are very fortunate today to have some neighbors who have some good resources. You're utilizing one today, you've utilized two in the past. And we're hopeful that as time goes on, some things could change and you could begin to rely more on each other, all three maybe, in some form or other. And that would in fact provide enhanced service delivery to the public because service delivery for fire and EMS is, the first and foremost important thing is response time. So if you have the closest unit going that is available, rather than somebody that's two or three or four or five minutes farther away, it's much better improved service. So we wrote this report talking about cooperative services, talking about options for the future, knowing that some of the options are not reasonable for today, thinking that down the road that you might find a way to work through some of the issues that exist and, you know, look at what's best for the customer instead of some things that have gone down in the past.
Well, unfortunately, I'm probably older than most people in this room, but I can remember when they started in Dade County, that was the answer to everybody's problem. One major fire department, one major police department, it'd be cheaper for everybody. But then again, a lot of the cities didn't want to give it up and everything.
Right.
But then again, cities like us, we would be looking for something like that because...
Well, you have a form of that today, it's just regional as opposed to countywide. So it's a, you've taken an important step, an important step forward.
But we have right now, we put a lot of money in our Broward County taxes.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, most of it goes to schools and everything, but it seems like a lot of that money we put into Broward County, that Broward County would be able to come back and give us fire services at a reasonable rate.
Well, they are doing your dispatching. And so that's an important county-wide function that actually in and of itself helps to improve service and cooperation and knowledge of each other's operations so that one dispatch center kind of keeps an eye on what's going on countywide and then can know what resources are the closest to suggest them when appropriate.
Thank you, Bishop.
I'm going to push you just a little bit further, Les, and kind of...
Okay.
Move along, along Gary's question.
Sure.
And taking a look at that in tremendous amount of respect. I know what you do and you've been doing this for a long time and you've done it for a lot of municipalities.
Yeah.
You were suggesting potentially maintain the existing model, yet you were also suggesting going from three to five, which is, I guess, one additional fire, one additional EMS, whatever the combination is, but going from three to five. Knowing what our budgetary situation is, what reality is, and your suggestion or recommendation to maintain the existing model, how would you expect to accomplish that within existing budgetary constraints?
Well, take a look at your expenditures today. You're paying stipends for the volunteer fire department, you're paying salaries for the volunteer fire department, so they're really not true volunteers. And there are duplications of the work that they're doing today in terms of running out of the same station with each one with a pumper. So at the same time, there is a shortage of staff to deliver a good quality, consistent EMS. So if your budget, if you want to retain the activity of the volunteers, then you might need to... might need to look for additional funds for the paid staff increase that's suggested. Or, you know, ask the volunteers to consider going to operations as a true volunteer department or some form of that is one way to do it. Obviously, they provide, the volunteers provide a consistent staffing that if they were true volunteers would likely not be the case. Because they would then most likely have standby programs that would be implemented and it'd be more difficult to get consistent staffing of the volunteers. So, implementation, an implementation planning process would help you identify those things and opportunities, and then you could consider whether you wanted to make a change in terms of funding of the volunteer department, or whether you wanted to not fund the increased staffing for Davie, or if you wanted to come up with part of the funds or all of the funds otherwise for the staffing, so...
No, I hear what you're coming from, Les, and some things that obviously this administration and this council will have to consider and evaluate...
Right.
Moving forward. But potentially, you know, recognizing what our situation is from a budgetary standpoint, you know, some of those things that you were throwing out there for us to contemplate could be, you know, just a variety of things.
Yeah.
And listen, we're realists, we would never ever, would we ever compromise firing EMS services? The most important service a municipality can provide, in my opinion, in my opinion, if not the most important, one of the most important services that we can provide. But I'm also realist, you know, I have to deal with, all of us have to deal with what reality is from a financial perspective as well. And put us in a position to come up with a model recognizing what reality is and implement, you know, create a policy or implement a process or, you know, confirmation of utilization of existing services, whether you add to that, subtract from that, supplement it, you know, go back to true volunteer fire services as opposed to what exists out there now. Certainly, there was, are some things that this, that we have to contemplate moving forward.
Yes.
Okay. That was very helpful, Les, I appreciate that. Counsel, any other questions? Steve?
Yeah, so, that was a good question. So, what I'm a little, I guess I need a little more clarification on, is I'm not, I'm not getting these two concepts put together. One is maintaining the current combined effort that we've got. And then the other one is talking about, you know, adjusting, removing the stipends or something like that, which will remove really, in effect, the volunteer side of it to increase the staff for the paid staff. So, I'm, those two recommendations seem to be one or the other. It doesn't seem to be that there is, we can maintain the current situation and also, you know, take from Peter to pay Paul kind of a situation. Can you clarify that? I'm not...
I was giving you some more options within the option, if you will. If you had to maintain your current budget, I was giving you a couple of options, not suggesting that you take those options, but, you know, wanting, you know, adding the staff and not changing other expenditures, of course, you'd need to come up with funds from someplace else. Or, within your current budget, look at what changes could be made in terms of stipend and salary. Not suggesting you do that, but it is an option.
Sure, sure. No, so, I guess, I guess what I was, all right, so...
Can I join you?
I'm just trying to understand the recommendation there. So, if...
Can I jump in with you, Steve?
In a second.
Okay.
So, I guess, I guess what I, what we would be weighing one against the other is the value that the volunteer fire department brings to the table versus the value that those two additional staff bring to the table.
That's, that's right.
And so, I didn't make it all the way through this document either, to be honest with you, we just got it, but...
Actually, this discussion is not in the document.
Right, so, well, okay. So, but I didn't hear a lot of discussion from your side on the value that the volunteer fire department brings to the table today, and where you would put that.
Well, the volunteer options chapter goes into substantial detail about the current department and what they provide, their history, and, you know, what they do within the community. And typically, volunteer fire departments are important to the community. As to, you know, the full-time staffing of a volunteer fire department, there's a cost there that has to be considered, obviously. And a decision which I think falls in your laps would be to kind of decide which is more important, basically making certain that the EMS is, has constant staffing or paying volunteers to operate another pumper, which operates, you know, at the same time as the Davie pumper does. So, look at call load, fire call load and EMS call load and response times to make a decision like that. And consider other sources of funding that you may have or not have, but...
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Doug, and then I'll get back to you.
Les?
Yes.
To make it real easy and simple, you have $3.1 million to spend.
Yes.
How are you going to spend it?
How would I spend?
You're the expert here, I'm handing you $3.1 million, and you need to protect this town, how are you going to spend it?
That's actually, that's above my pay grade. I can, within the two, I think emergency medical services is an important function that should be provided more consistently. And so, I think I'd place, if that was all the money you had, I'd place the priority on, on the increased staffing of the Davie units, to have an ambulance and an engine there at all times. And maybe work out a compromise approach with the volunteer department.
Okay.
In terms of stipends and...
And how, in your mind or your expertise, how would you execute that? I understood the adding of the Davie side, how would you execute it with the volunteer side?
I'd consider a phase-out approach, either total or partial. And sit down with the volunteer department and get their input. And there's no question that a total deletion of the stipend would probably substantially reduce the response capability.
Well, the stipend hasn't always been there, it's only been there the last two or three years.
Right. So, I, not having been here before it existed, I'm not sure how things worked at that time. But most volunteer fire departments tend to be nighttime, more nighttime availability. There is another issue in that, as it relates to the volunteers, and that is that it's been very difficult, as I understand it in the past, to recruit and retain volunteers from within Southwest Ranches. There's only a small handful of the volunteers that are from within the town.
Right, with the other, on the other hand, related to the volunteers, a lot of, a lot of them go to the time, trouble, money expense...
They do, yeah.
...related to getting their certification. And they have to be involved or related or tied to a, I don't know if it's accredited facility, I don't know what the terminology is, but they need to be, to keep their stuff active if they do want to move forward with it. And I believe that's another scenario that the volunteer fire department also offers.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's...
It does, but I don't think it requires them to be paid on a 24-hour basis to...
No, clearly...
To have access to that.
That, that's true.
Obviously, they are a tremendous benefit to the town.
Without a doubt.
Because there, I think there's a 20 or so of the volunteers that are paramedics, and another handful that are just EMTs. So, that is a benefit to the town.
But the stipends, I mean, that volunteer fire department started a long ago.
It did.
And when the town initially got involved with it, we contributed $30,000 a year initially.
Right.
And now, when you add everything up, it's just over $500,000 a year.
Right.
So, it's not that we don't appreciate it, but...
No.
We need to do what's best, so that's why I put you on the spot as far as $3.1 million, how are you going to spend it?
Right.
Freddie?
Yeah. On your opinion, you have to have two units at every fire. I think that's standard with any procedure with any fire department, on any fire, you have two units on that.
It depends on the nature of the fire and the nature of the call, but yes.
Well, I'm not positive we...
Well, a car fire would just take one pumper, for example.
Well, yeah, a car, residential fire.
And smells and bells would likely take a pumper, right?
We got that now, only because of our volunteer fire department. In other words, when Davie runs, they run with them. When 172nd runs, they run with them, don't they, Bob? I'm pretty sure, that's what I was told. So, we're really, you know, we got the best system we're going to get with what we've got now. But how long can we do that? How long are these kids going to work for $10 an hour? You know, those are the things that we're facing now.
Right.
You know, it'd be fine if we could say, "Yeah, we can do this," and just go ahead and continue doing it, but I don't see we can be continued doing it in the future. It's not going to be there. But it'd be good if we, we could look back and then we could go ahead and get a volunteer fire unit, a unit that would, they could use all the time, and we could live with that.
Sure.
But I don't know what the Davie contract, but to me, I would hope that the Davie contract would say they would have two units on every fire.
They do. Yeah, they do. Station 91 generally is the next engine that comes and the next rescue.
In other words, if our volunteer fire truck from 172nd goes on a Davie fire on the east side of town, don't they go, they pull another unit from Davie to go to that fire?
Yes, they do.
I wouldn't...
Davie essentially responds as if the volunteer department wasn't responding, as I view it. They rely on, they have a contract approach, within the contract, it calls for them to respond with two stations at least, and more than that if it's needed.
Any other, I know, Les, that you're trying to get back to Maryland tonight, we don't want to...
I think we're talking about tomorrow.
And I know that you're going to be accessible, no, I hear what you're saying.
That's okay.
But obviously, this is a lot of information that, a lot of it we're just getting, that we need to take a look at. And even your recommendation is 62, 90 days. And I'm sure that this council will want to turn it over to the Fire Advisory Board for their evaluation, assessment, and potential recommendation as well. And moving forward with this, it's going to take some time, obviously, and some, hopefully, some input from you, because we certainly do value your knowledge, your experience and background, and give us great advice. So, we've got some, we obviously have some work, work to do.
Okay.
That's for sure.
Well, thank you for your time.
Les, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it very much.
Sure.
Got to start. Okay, that concludes item number four. Item number five is public comment. Mike, there's going to be, we got a long way to go, a long way to go.
Okay, we have two speakers tonight, Vince Valetta and Newell Hollingsworth. Anyone else want to speak? Then fill out a card and bring it up right now, so we have two more. All right, Vince? Three minutes per speaker.
Mayor, Vince Valetta, BL Box 291507, Davie, Florida. Mayor, Councilman, I wanted to welcome our clerk, our new clerk, Russell Monyaz, on board. And I wanted to compliment our town administrator for the choices in his new selection of our new staffs, an engineer and clerk, and also in the financial department. Want to take this opportunity to thank the Vice Mayor to come to our Sunshine Ranches election night and give us a filling in of the, what the town is doing for the citizenry of our town. And he took the time to bring us up to date and what the town is doing for our citizens. At this time, I'd like to, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our new president, William Bill Wellington, to you, who was elected last night for our, for our association. And I'm sure he'll do a great job for our Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. Bill?
Next speaker, Newell Hollingsworth. And while Russell's trying to learn how to use the system, I'll keep time.
Good evening. I'd like to...
I'm timing you, just go. Okay, there you go.
Your clock's running, Noel.
I was going to, I was going to congratulate Andy, but heck with it.
You got one minute, Noel.
Tonight, the LED lights are out in the parking lot, cost savings. So, this officially concludes the building and conversion of Town Hall. At this point, there's one thing left to do. You got to get the brass plaque and dedicate it. Time to do that. And there's a lot of individuals that need to be invited that are part of the forming of this town that have wanted to be here when we do dedicate it. And I think we ought to dedicate it before they all die. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Bennett?
I want to say I agree with Public Safety Solutions that I think currently what we have today is a positive and good outcome for our community. And I live in Southwest Ranches. With that said, I don't believe we have redundant services with two engines out there. When they do an adaptive response, which means they're jumping on a rescue or an engine, if they're on a rescue and they're going to the hospital, the only one left in our city is Southwest Ranches. They do move up trucks at times, but a lot of times trucks are moving east. So, I believe what we have today is a good thing. The other thing is, if, from my past experience with the fire rescue, you bring two additional people on, you know, five, let's say with Davie, that cost, what I know of from my past job, is over a million dollars. You're getting 40 personnel at 500, and that's taking care of the housing, the maintenance, everything. So, I got to tell you something, it's not quite what you see. And Freddie, you're correct, there's a two-in, two-out rule. By the time you wait for a second unit again, and they'd have to sit out front and wait to go into a fire. So, when you, when you have a fire, you have to have a two-in, two-out rule. So, there's a lot more to be seen than what's said here tonight. And do you have any questions you'd like to ask me?
Thanks.
We can't ask you questions, we can talk during our time.
It's public comment, Lee. I'm sure that there'll be a lot of questions as we move forward with the assessment and evaluation of this report.
Thank you. Dee, you're up, followed by Assistant Chief Kastner, followed by Gage Shaples. And then final speaker is Bob Hartman.
Deesh Shoder, 5501. When we have our ball...
When we have our bulk, we have a couple of vehicles that are kind of standard material in this town now. One is a white truck, one is a red truck, and they seem to cruise all through the town picking up scrap metal, or refrigerators, wash machines, dryers, whatever the case may be, but now they've gone on to other things. And what I've noticed is, when they're going through all this stuff, they throw your garbage everywhere. And I've seen it, I've actually watched them do it, and I've called Robert and let him know. And now, they're going through the garbage, actually tearing open the bags, which I've watched, and going through personal stuff that people throw out. I don't know what you guys are going to do about it, but it really does need to stop. I mean, it was great at first, you're helping somebody out, you throw some metal out there, the guy makes a few bucks, everybody's happy, go on your merry way, but now you're actually going into people's garbage, that's got to stop. I mean, you just can't have that anymore. So, it's something that needs to be looked into, Andy, I believe that's going to be your job. So, yeah, you see, you write your little notes down there, and like I said, I don't mean to take and take the bread or butter away from the guy, but they're, they're actually in people's personal stuff, so, and, and they're making a mess, and it's got to stop. Thank you.
Assistant Chief Castner, followed by Gabe Chapels. Final speaker, Bob Hartman.
Leslie Castner, 17400 Sunset Drive. I heard the presentation, and I do have to say, Chief Bennett didn't mention it, but last year, when we heard that people were complaining about maybe the volunteers aren't doing enough, he did check with Davie to see what it would cost to put two more personnel on the truck, so that the rescue was staffed at all times. Davie gave us a price of a million to a million and a half dollars at that time to staff two personnel. So, it would be a half a million to a million dollars over what the volunteers are costing you now. We haven't raised their prices, we actually went down last year. There is some equipment we would need if we're going to stay, but we're doing the best we can. Our volunteers don't charge for events, they don't charge for training. If we do away with the stipends, and we start doing some type of wage, then what do we do for the hours that they put in for training and for the events? That's going to get very expensive, which is why we went with the stipends originally. We're trying to keep the cost down. We really don't have a problem bringing in volunteers. Our biggest problem is retention of experienced personnel. And I've asked and mentioned if we could just get maybe four or five personnel that we could hire, so that we have experienced officers and drivers, we would be fine. And we would have the experience. Most of our volunteers are medics, and they're on, on the ambulance, with American Ambulance, medics, they're on all the different ambulance companies. So, most of, a lot of them do work for ambulance companies, first responders. So, they do have some experience. They don't have the experience that some of the personnel at Davie have, but they're getting there. But unfortunately, the good ones, we keep losing, because they get hired by paid departments. But we do a lot of training, we have six personnel on our training staff, they get no money whatsoever. They come out because they want to do it. We do EMS training, we do fire training. So, our personnel put in a lot of time, they train while they're on shift, and every single Tuesday, they're training with us. So, I, I've been with the department a long time, and this is the best this department has ever been under Chief Bennett. Thank you.
Gabe Chapels, followed by final speaker, Bob Hartman.
I just wanted to make it real quick. I noticed on Facebook that Marie Nix was ecstatic that her husband is getting a national award for this bridge that he built, and it's really cool that he lives in our town, and he's recognized nationally for his bridge building. So, thought I'd let you know, maybe I can get the information for you, and you can put it in our newsletter. We have a lot of very talented people in this town that we, we don't even recognize. When the nation recognizes them, we don't recognize them. So, she put it out there, so I guess it would be okay for us to recognize them.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Terrace. I had a whole lot of questions about that report. Is it possible, Andy, to put the report up on the website for people to look at, for residents to look at? Because I, I was looking at the, the maps and things he put out there, and it made notice you can't.
No, maybe, it's 180 pages.
Okay, yeah, perfect. Put it up as a PDF. Because, you know, when he was flying through the maps and things, a lot of them showed response times that seemed to extend all the way into Plantation and Sunrise, and I just couldn't figure out how that maps to our town. When he was showing response units coming in, he showed them from Weston and Pembroke Pines, and we know that doesn't happen. So, I just would love to go through it, just to understand what conclusions he drew from some of the data that he was putting up here today. Another thing in the CAFER presentation, Freddie, you had asked the question of whether our liabilities are funded for the commitments we've made. I think you, you put it at about $16 million or so versus the 40, $44 million we have in assets. I'm not sure if you got an accurate answer, and it would be great if you could, because if we're not recognizing those as liabilities on the books, in other words, money we owe somebody, a commitment, I don't believe, but I may be wrong, a commitment to a governmental agency to do something, I don't think we carry that on the books. I mean, I've never seen that before, but I'm not a governmental accountant, so you need to get the answer from the right guy. You heard, yes, you do, but I'm not sure if, I think he might not have heard your question properly. The last thing, you know, I've got two other things. Dee brought up the, the scrap guys. It is getting bad. What's happening is, they'll go, they, they drive around usually the day before the bulk guys come, they start opening up your garbage, and guess what that does? It opens up for the dogs and the raccoons. We've been cleaning it up for the last couple of weeks, the neighbors across the street, they started first, there, there's a dog or critters in the neighborhood that are tearing into it, and I saw the same thing a week, two, two bulks ago, where they were, they weren't just in the bulk piles, they were opening up the garbage cans. So, that's something that needs to be addressed. A lot of cities have ordinances that stop those guys. I don't know if we want to be that heavy-handed, but I don't think you want to have the police chasing them around town either. The last thing I wanted to mention, and I'm not sure if you, I know a number of you guys drive around town during the day in the afternoons, I get off early on Fridays, and I brought this up to Andy, and I'd love to hear if you've found anything on this. I'm noticing, you know, we, we've got a lot of lawn service guys in our town that come into service to our community, we've got a lot of lawn service guys that are based here. Griffin Road on Friday afternoons becomes demolition derby. Those guys are flying up and down Griffin, you know what? Where's the, where, where? Can't hear me? 10 seconds more. You know, I'll go down the road, going 46. I've got guys going past me going 75, pulling a trailer in the back with stuff flying off the back, and, you know, it's only a matter of time before one of those guys jackknifes and kills somebody, or lots of people, including their own. I asked Andy to look into it, I'd love to hear what successes you've had, but we've got a problem there that is, is definitely a safety risk for our community. These guys can't be going down this road, you know, pulling all their stuff in the back, full of people, and as well going, you know, 80 miles, 75, 80 on Griffin. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Item number six, board reports. Anybody here from any committees like to update us? Kay?
Well, my favorite battle cry is on the agenda, so I'm not going to discuss it, but we do have the Chili Cook-Off coming up, which is sponsored by the Astronite Foundation, which is very beneficial to our town. That's the whole purpose of the Astronite Foundation.
And it's April.
Huh?
Say the date.
Yeah. It's April 26th. It's from noon to 5:30, and if you want to enter, the applications are on the back. I would hope that all the council members would whip up some chili and enter the contest. Also, if you want to enter and you're not here tonight, you can come to the Town Hall and get an application and enter the Chili Cook-Off. Big trophy, really nice for the winner. Second place, I don't know, we're discussing. We have an inside joke with Rick Bell, who says he's determined to win it this year. So, he wanted, he didn't want a second place, because he says that's like you weren't good enough, so we just have laughed about it. But he has pictures, tons of pictures of him cutting up fresh fruit and vegetables and so on, because he doesn't add any meat to his, but his was really hot last year, so we told him to kind of tone it down a little bit. At any rate, hope to see everybody there, and don't forget, you can enter with these applications to participate against the rest of the Chili Cooks. Bye.
Thank you, Kay. Any other board reports? See, no further board reports. Item number six is concluded. Item number seven, council member comments. Any council members? Gary, get your hand up first.
Yeah. This is going to take a while.
I didn't bring my pillow or my sleeping bag.
Sorry, there's, there's an inside joke there.
I just have a couple of things.
Oh, no, it's all be brief.
Maybe more people know about the joke than I do. Anyway, I just wanted to say, welcome to our new town clerk, Russell, and our new engineer, Collette. Thank you very much for coming on board. We have great expectations, you guys come highly recommended, and you've probably got a laundry list that's a mile long, so, but we're in good hands. Those of you that noticed, there's a lot of work being done out front on the front median, that's being modified courtesy of Broward County. Just to let everybody know how long some things take, that was started 18 months ago, is when we started inquiring about it, so.
That's a slow government move.
It's getting, it's getting there, ladies and gentlemen, it's getting there, it'll make the whole front area the way you turn in and everything safer. Just wanted to mention that the Education Advisory Board is having a food truck event on April 5th at the Equestrian Park from 4 to 8, and the, there's a hazmat pickup at the Rolling Oaks Park on the 12th. Is that correct, Sandy? On the 12th? Okay. From 8 to 12 approximately on Saturday morning, use motor oil, things of that nature. At the Rolling Oaks Park. And then, Rolling Oaks is having an Easter egg hunt on the 13th, so I guess the kids will pick up everything they got missed. No, just kidding. There's a big, there's a big Easter egg hunt, the whole town is invited at, at Rolling Oaks. It starts at, I believe brunch is being served at 11, and the actual egg hunting starts at 12, and there is no, I guess till all the eggs are found, or the lawnmower finds them, one of the two, is, that's on the 13th. And then, the, the big Chili Cook-Off, which I'll be entering again this year, I'll see if I can get the coveted crock this year, is the 26th from 12 to 5. But I, I need to make sure I get dinner tonight. I really got to emphasize that the whole town's invited to the Rolling Oaks Egg Hunt, so I can fulfill my promise to my wife, and that's all I have.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. The, I, hey, I had to say it, you know, I had to say it. It was, it was the script, so. We did have a, a meeting tonight, just to give a quick update, won't go into details, because there's going to be some additional research and work that needs to be done, but we did have a meeting tonight. Appreciate Keith and Carol Colici coming out a little early, so we could have a meeting and begin to work on Tisdor from a legal standpoint, and get those things lined up. You know, there's three parts to it, the engineering, the legal, and then the funding. So, we were working on the legal portion and had some, I think, some real good progress, and I think some good ideas that will make it, the whole process, a lot smoother. So, very pleased with it, and I appreciate their time. I did want to say one other word about the, the audit and all that. You know, as, as the meeting rolled on, I started to recall some other things, and it wasn't that long ago, if we will remember, it wasn't that long ago that the town was actually fired by its auditors because of the lack of cooperation. You know, how often does that ever happen? So, you know, talk about 180 degrees, the other direction. Excellent, excellent job. Excellent job.
That's worth another round.
And, and I have one other thing, how quickly we forget. It wasn't that long ago that our fiscal year was over. It was over before the, I mean, the next year was over, before we had the audit completed for the year, two years ago. So, it's just amazing, the, how quickly Andy, Marty, your staffs, everybody here, just how quickly that turned around. Just unbelievable job. Thank you so much. Thanks, that's it.
Yeah, I don't have that much. Actually, the Fish and Hole Park is moving right along the, Andy told me yesterday that the fence repair thing has been issued. We know the bathroom has been issued, and they're just waiting to get everything around so they can start it, and really, we want to get the fence fixed so, before they can get in there, so that we've got security on that place. And we've also, Andy told me too, that the $10,000 has been, we, we got the money, so we can start moving on what we talked about last time, of clearing that place in there that, to do that, so we can get that done, but, and then I, I think all of you received it, because I know it was on my email, that they wrote a letter to the gentleman that's doing the, clearing the two acres on the south end, telling him what has to be done and everything. So, I think everybody's on the same page, and I'm glad our new engineer is. I haven't had the opportunity, but I'm, I want you to reserve a day that I can take you out and go over to Fish and Hole Park with you. And really, that's about all I have. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes council member comments. Item number.
So, Gary was the long-winded one. Wow, wow.
Just ditto on your comments about the, the audit. I mean, just unbelievable, just remarkable achievement in where we've been, and you reminded me, you absolutely, I remember those days. It was embarrassing, to say the least, and again, congratulations and accolades to Marty and, and your, and your staff. I see Peter there, and just remarkable, just an outstanding job. Okay, item number eight, legal comments.
None.
Let me hear that one more time. Did I hear none? Wow, yeah, absolutely.
That's when you know, huh?
That might be, I don't know how long that's been since we've had a none.
If you keep talking, you might come up with something.
Watch out, Andy, you're on, you're item number nine, administration comments.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't be as brief as Keith was. Just a few things that I do want to run through. The first thing I want to do is, I, I do want to acknowledge Marty's help and his hard work on the CAFER as well. As I've indicated to all of you privately, I'll, I'll be nice here and say, Marty is sometimes a pain in the neck, is as nice as I can put it. And I, I am so thankful to have him here that way, because over the course of a year, every single thing that comes up, he's just aware of where the pitfalls are, what the problems are, and he absolutely makes sure that we handle things as correctly as we need to handle them, so that when the auditors do come in, things are in order, we're not playing catch-up, we're not trying to clean up things after the fact, so I'm just very grateful to have him working with us, and I just want to say thank you to Marty.
Yeah, great job.
A couple other things, as, as Newell has acknowledged, the LED lights are out in the parking lot, so we finally got that project done, that's one I can check off the list. Bob Hartman had mentioned the, the Griffin Road traffic, and that's something that Bob had made aware of, made me aware of the last few days. I, I think he ran into it most, most pressingly last Friday. I've met with Davie, with the police department, they actually went out yesterday afternoon and did a traffic operation out there during those hours. They didn't run into that situation while they were there, but I, I do have a report back, and Bob, I think you may not have seen it, I did email you some of that information, but I have requested that they continue to do that. You know, Bob had mentioned it was a Friday afternoon issue, so we're going to make sure that they're, that they're out there keeping an eye on that as well. We do have on the agenda later on, the, the surplus thing of the BSO vehicles. I do want to acknowledge Chief Bennett and some of the help from the volunteers, they've actually given us some help in stripping some of the police equipment off of those vehicles and help preparing those for, for eventual sale. Several of you have mentioned the Chili Cook-Off, the School Education Advisory Board, and just one thing I want to add to that, the Chili Cook-Off on April 26th, we've added something. one thing I want to add to that, the chili cook-off on April 26th, we've added something else to that. We want to help roll out the Davey Police Department for our residents, so we're gonna have kind of a meet and greet with Davey Police with some of the equipment. And, so we'll give an extra reason for people to come out, participate in that and the chili cook-off, just make it a little bit more of a, just more of a family-friendly day, more things. And if we have some, the space available there, we're, we're gonna involve fire in that as well, so, that, that should be a lot of fun. Russell, do you have that picture teed up? This was something I shared with you all by email. The new entry sign is ready and I, I've gotta print it out, but I do have it up on, Russell's gonna put it up on the screen so I can share it with you. And I do want to thank George Morris for his hard work on that. It came out. The entry signs came out, absolutely beautiful. We're, yeah, it's hard to tell from there, but we do have a printout here that we'll send down the DIES and certainly share that with, with the audience this evening. Other than that, Mayor, I have really one thing. And this, some of you may take this as good news, some of you may take this as bad news, I'm not sure, but I want to share it with you and hopefully the Vice Mayor will be back to weigh in as well. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is April 10th. You've all done such a good job, we have no items lined up for the agenda on April 10th. So, I will tell you tonight, well, normally we start planning those things weeks in advance because there's research that needs to be done, the resos need to be prepared, contracts need to be signed, memos need to be drafted. So, at, at this point in time, we generally have a list of items that we are finalizing for that agenda. We do not. So, I, I would suggest to you as, you know, if you do want to come in and, and host a meeting, if there's something that we have, we'll, we'll certainly add to it. But, at this point, there, there is no pressing town business to be conducted on April 10th. I'd certainly leave that to council to decide.
That's unprecedented, two unprecedented things, you know? No audit exception.
I promise you, I had nothing to do with it.
Go ahead.
Because Steve usually points to me.
No, no, I wasn't pointing. No, I was just gonna make my, I don't think I've made this statement since Andy's been here, so I will, I'll, I'll make it now. That, you know, my, my personal philosophy is that so long as one resident wants to come to Town Hall and make a statement to Town Council, then we, we have business to take care of that night and we should be here. So, there we go, and we've got one, so.
Doug, Freddie, Gary?
There's nothing.
There's nothing to have on the agenda.
April 10th.
And he ju, his point is, you want to have a meeting anyway. And Steve's, Steve's comment was, if one resident wants to come and talk, then we have one, because Dee Schroeder just volunteered.
I'd say we didn't have a fast meeting, that, but we still need a meeting.
Okay.
I'm fine. Not having a meeting, I'm fine.
You're having a meeting for nothing.
You might set a record, Andy. I think it's pretty much consensus, but you might set a record for April the 10th. This might be the quickest one, yeah, ever.
That's, okay, we'll see you all on April 10th then. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thanks, Andy. Okay, item number 10, ordinance second reading.
The ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending section 010-030. Terms defined to provide for a definition of nicotine vaporizer and liquid nicotine creating section 015-140. Sale of nicotine vaporizer or liquid vaporizers to minors prohibited, providing for inclusion in the town's code, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Gary, I know this is your item. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, it's actually all our items. I just got to the mic before everybody else did, I think, but I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second approved. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. We have a motion is second. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, call a question, please, Russell.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 11.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute an administrative services agreement with the International City Management Association Retirement Corporation, also known as ICMA-RC, to create a town employee retirement plan, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As, as you all know, this is a, a topic that we have discussed at two different meetings previously. The council, I'm gonna turn it over to Marty to speak to it a little bit further, but the council had expressed some very clear guidelines that you wanted to make sure that we met and so that any plan we brought back before you met those requirements. And I want to tell you tonight that, that this does meet the requirements that the council had laid out. As I said, I'm gonna let Marty speak to the particulars, but it, it also has no, no management costs to the town for those accounts. So, there is, other than the contribution that the council likes to make, there are no costs for, for management in any way, shape, or form. And Marty, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just let Marty speak to those specifics so he can recap those to, I'll say, refresh your memories.
Absolutely, Andy. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, again, as Andy has indicated, it's a follow-up from February 13th, February 27th. I'm pleased to inform you that it meets all your consensus direction that you have provided. Andy and I went back to ICMA. We went with your ideas, suggestions. They came up with an alternative, two plans with 401 profit sharing, 457 voluntary employee contribution. This, the eight criteria listed on page eight that spell out all your specifics have been met and established. Right now, we, we also interviewed and met with alternative plans and as Andy has indicated, ICMA came back and has waived all employer fees. So, the $500 fee, $1,000 fee is not in existence and that is a, the revised contracts were issued to you by Russell yesterday, eliminating the employer fee entirely. All the criteria, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have rather than go into each one individually.
Mayor, if I may. There's one item that I do want to address that's within that list and actually two of you, two members of council brought this to my attention. And it's item eight, which says Town Council, as well as staff, will have the opportunity to change their respective contribution percentages annually. And for the record, to, to clarify, that's not a retirement account for council. You, you are specifically excluded by our charter and by the reso here. This is not establishing a, a retirement fund for council. What that's referring to is council having the opportunity to adjust the contribution rate on the employees annually. So, I do want to make sure that's fully clear.
Thank you, Andy, clarifying that. Gary?
Yeah, a quick question, Marty or Andy whoever can answer it. The waiver of the fees, is that forever?
Yes, that is correct. They removed it entirely from the contract. The contract that you originally have, I think it was provision number seven, employer fee. The new one, you will know, has no paragraph for employer fee, so it's permanent removal.
Council, any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, Mayor.
Go ahead, Steve.
I had a question earlier and I think you had, you had answered it to me, but I'll just bring it out here, that number seven talks about based on, on, credit starts on their data, their data hire. And, the language is in there specifically that if somebody were to leave and to come back, that, that period that they would be gone would not count against, would not be counted towards their credit, correct?
Yes, that is correct, Councilmember Breckus. The clear definition is with active service. The only way they get vesting contributions are during periods of time of active service.
Okay, thank you.
Council? And just, just a confirmation of the cost breakdown, just for the record management, the chart officials, which is the town administrator, the finance director, and the town clerk. Total payroll is about $330,500. Five percent of that, the town's contribution would be $16,525 a year, effective April 1st. Because it's only a, the remaining balance this fiscal year, the town's contributions will be $8,263. For the general employees, current payroll is $570,596. Five percent of that is $28,530. The remaining balance this fiscal year would be $14,265. So, what does that add up to, Marty?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Andy.
If I may just add to that?
Sure.
Those numbers there show the maximum exposure the council would face should you agree to the 5%. Recognize that number, the contribution the town makes per individual employee would be predicated by an employee match, so it's based on what the employee contributes. So, that number here is a worst-case scenario. It's not a, not necessarily a true number based on participation.
It's assuming that every employee in both positions go to the maximum of 5%. Okay. So, the maximum it could be if all the employees took the option of 5% would be $28,530 and $16,525. What does that add up to? 28, 38, 44, about $45,055, right? About $45,000 a year.
That's correct, 45,055.
And that's assuming everybody.
And max.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
But, since halfway through the year, it's only half that.
Right, exactly. We have that approximate. Okay, I don't have any questions.
I do want to.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have to make one other comment, that last time we had this discussion and we came up with this criteria, the general consensus was that it was impossible to do. Marty, you've done it again, buddy. You've done it again. Thank you very much.
Great job with that. I've got to get a motion first.
I'm making a motion.
Motion approved. Sorry.
Got a motion is second approved. Any members of the public wish to comment?
Noel Hollingsworth, I just want to verify that the employees have an opt-in period every year. And, when is that time? And, the council sets the maximum percentage every year. When is that time? Because it should be before budget, because it has to be part of budget. And, the other thing is, is there any percentage fees attached to the money that is contributed? Because they have to make profits somewhere. And, I showed you some numbers last time that said on various different ones, there's various different percentages. And I was curious if there is a percentage hit on the money that is contributed by the town and by the individual. And, so therefore it'd be less money that is in their account each year if it's 2% or 4% or whatever the, the cost is. Like to know if there's any cost. And the last question is, has our town attorney reviewed it and signed off on it? Thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
Has anybody that's gonna benefit from this plan kind of realized the fees once you pay in in a variable annuity? I believe we're still into a variable annuity and that's where the disadvantage is for the employee. I understand it took your fees away upfront, but it's an insurance company. They know how to structure these things backwards and forwards. So, if you don't understand annuities, maybe it's the time to read about it. But, all those investments they have are wrapped up in a variable annuity. That's my only warning.
Thanks, Jeff.
Astronaut 5480, Southwest 178th Avenue. Well, at last, something has been done for the employees. I've been asking for this for a long, long time and it's good to see it come through. And, that's one of the reasons, I think, why we have lost some good employees. And this is one other way of retention, of keeping them. So, thank you for doing what you have done.
Thank you, Esther. Hi, Jeff, good to see you.
Jeff Kastner, 17400 Southwest 51st Street. It's been awhile since I've been up here. Over at work, we have a 401K plan and I'm actually a co-trustee of it. There are things that do come up. One question I have, I know we go through an annual audit. There are, there are additional expenses that do come up and I don't know, you know, what the cutoff or if there is a cutoff. I know we pay about $15,000 a year for an annual audit so that we can file a 5,500, which I assume is gonna have to be filed under this plan as well. The employee pays $5 a quarter towards the cost of the plan, which goes to the company that administers the plan. The company also makes money off of the investments that are made. They're paid by the, the fund, not by the employer, not by the town, but they do make money off of it, which is a question that just came up. So, there, there are, you know, I've experienced additional costs that do arise through it. Now, the other question, is this company providing the financial expertise? I don't know whether there's funds that are gonna be available that the employees will have the ability to go in and make their own investment choices. And if there are, if this is the company that's gonna monitor the, the investments because it's an area of concern, especially since it's going to be a town-sponsored 401K. Who's gonna be, who's gonna be acting on the town's behalf? Because even though there's a contract with the company, there are certain things that they look to the sponsor of the plan that has to make decisions, such as hardship withdrawals. And that, there, you know, it has to be, a determination has to be made by the sponsor. The company will just basically relay the information. So, there, there will be people here involved. Believe me, we look for a hands-off, you know, that basically outsourced the whole thing and not have to do too much towards the 401 administration. And, we found out there was a lot of work, there was a lot of work that needed to be done, although we do have more employees and obviously the town does. So, there are a lot of, you know, there are things, we thought we were going to a company signing a contract saying, you deal with it, we don't have to do anything. And we do the same thing, flying against, we have a discretionary match of the contributions. We can go up to whatever percentage we want. Unfortunately, we've done 10% of the contributions each year except for one. So, you get to review and see what the contributions were, what the finances of the town is, and you do have to make a decision on how much you will go ahead and contribute on an annual basis. So, that, you know, it's, it's definitely, again, not hands-off. You know, it's not something you're gonna turn over and say, oh, just let us write a check when we need to. You're gonna need to be put to, you're gonna need to be ready, basically, to put more time in, I think, than you realize. And, one more point that I want to raise just very quickly. I only found out the other day that actually the chief and the assistant chief are considered part-time employees. All I know is, they may be paid like part-time, but they are, it's a stipend, but in reality, they are full-time employees. And by classifying them as part-time, any of these benefits that are afforded employees of the town are not afforded to them. And I think that's wrong. So, that's it.
Thanks, Jeff.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. There's a couple other experts on retirement plans. Vince is one and Mike Hanley's one. Because as these airlines have hit the rocks over the years, we've seen all the different types of plans. And, the one I have right now is probably the best I've ever had and that is, it's my own 401K. The company contributes to it, but I totally control it through my own fidelity account. I mean, I get the money in and I do whatever I want. It's my responsibility. When you start talking about annuities, that really rings a bell with me. These, these companies with these annuities, all they're doing is just scalping the employees. You look at those 2% or 3% that they take a year and at the end of your retirement, it's a huge amount of money. And, they get it. Believe me, they get it. I think the employees have to have a plan where they're completely in the driver's seat. They can go to either this company and let them manage it for them completely, or have a brokerage window where they can go and buy their own mutual funds, ETFs, individual stocks if they so choose. You know, everybody should be under, completely in control of their own destiny with the retirement, because once it leaves here, it's their money. And, you know, if they feel they need help, then the town should provide, you know, a reasonable person who can help them. But, when you start talking about annuities, the Fed is just pumping all kinds of money into the economy. We've got this bubble inflated like this and it, you know, people need to be able to protect their retirements. And, if, if you're tied up in an annuity and we have high inflation, you know, back in the Jimmy Carter days, it was 17, 18%, you're gonna get wiped out. So, I think that, anything with an annuity, Jim's completely right on this. You need to look at this. When I hear annuity, my fur goes up. I've been through 12 airlines now. I've lost a bundle. My retirement's been ruined over and over and over. So, be real careful about signing on to these companies that are offering free stuff. stuff upfront, because they bleed you the whole time. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. Counsel, we have a motion and a second to approve. Before that, there were a couple of questions. Andy, Marty, you want to address any of any of those?
Mayor, some of the more, maybe the more technical questions, I'm going to leave to Marty as the finance guru in the CPA. But there were questions about, council would set the annual contribution rate. That would be handled during the budget process. So, as we do that budget prep, and we're preparing for the year, once we know what our resources will be, that will be handled as part of the budget process. The employees, the way we structured this in order to meet the requirements of the council, is the town will contribute to a 401A account. The employees will contribute into a 457 that will actually be paired with that 401. And the reason we've done that is the 401 allows the employees the opportunity to change their percentage that was not allowed with the 401A. So, the town's match in the 401A will be based on what the employees putting into the 457, but the employees will have the opportunity annually to change their contribution rate. And Marty and I have discussed, if, in the event of a hardship during the course of the year, they could adjust that rate as well. So, we've tried to be very flexible to protect the town, but also give the employees the greatest amount of flexibility, and recognize that was certainly one of the concerns of the council going forward.
Marty?
Andy covered all the specifics.
Okay. Counsel, any additional question, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second to approve. Call a question, please, Russell.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Breakus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 12. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yes, item number 12.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the selection committee's recommendation and ranking for design build of the Rolling Oaks barn improvements, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement with East Coast Builder and Developers Corp. in an amount not to exceed $350,000 and zero cents, in substantially the same form as attached hereto as Exhibit A, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yes, Mayor, if I may. This is obviously the barn renovations. It was something that the town had gone out to bid on. We had a substantial number of contractors at our pre-bid meeting. I think we had 15 different firms represented. Two of them actually responded and brought us pricing. The selection and selection committee met and evaluated that. They brought in both of the respondents to give a presentation. The selection committee, and I agree with their selection, is to award the contract to East Coast to do that, to do the work on the barn. They've come in at a price of $350,000. The amount that we have budgeted in that barn renovation for this year was $356,000, so it falls certainly within the number that we have budgeted there. And if you look at the contractor list on that, or subcontractor list on that, it was actually nice to see there, many of our residents will be participating in that barn renovation. So, I thought that was a plus as well. So, other than that, and certainly, Mayor, if council has any questions, we're happy to discuss it, but we recommend the awarding of this contract to East Coast.
Thank you, Andy. Keith, any comment? Counsel? Gary?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
My only question is the financing. Is all of the money in this year's budget for this barn already been allocated in the budget? You're not going to have to make any budget changes and take from Peter to pay Paul, or from the reserves to pay for this project at this time? That's my only question. If the money's there in this budget already, fine. If not, then deny it.
All I can say is hallelujah, at last. Because we have been waiting for this for years and years. All sorts of plans have been put forward, and now, at last, we're going to see something concrete coming to fruition. I do hope we have it by September, so that we can have the Rolling Oaks barn there. We can have the next fundraiser for the Astronauts Box Foundation. So, hallelujah. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther.
I threatened Hollingsworth. Thank you very much. I can now die in peace. It's been a long haul to save that barn and turn it into something we can enjoy and have a lot of different activities in. This town needs it really bad. And, I mean, Rolling Oaks really parties, so it's in the right place, but everybody in town will be able to use it, and even some people outside, you know. So, thank you very much. It's been 13 years from bulldozing it down to Gary wanting to walk his dog and knock the barn down. So, thank you, Gary, for changing your mind and seeing that it can be used to good use. Thank you. Bye.
I knew there was no way I was going to escape that one.
Any other public comment? Seeing no further public comment. Public comment is now closed. Counsel, we have a motion and a second. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
Mayor, I'd like to make the record reflected. Let Gary make the motion, not me.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Call a question.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Breakus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, and I believe I can say to Noel that the money has already been allocated. Item number 13.
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, declaring town purchase vehicles and police equipment as surplus inventory, authorizing the town administrator to properly declare and to dispose of the surplus inventory, waiving all applicable procurement code provisions, allowing the town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents that may be necessary to dispose of the surplus vehicles and police equipment, and to effectuate the intent of this resolution, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, that I was going to bring this before you this time. We are now ready to move forward. We're surplusing the extra vehicles that we took from BSO when we changed over on Police Services Contract. This would allow us to work with propertyroom.com. Propertyroom.com does work with other municipalities. Davy uses them. I use them in Tamarack. You actually authorized us previously to use propertyroom.com when we surplus some of the excess computer equipment that we had when we made that transition. So, we've worked very well with them. They offer two plans. One is, they would take 5% of the sales price, and we would basically be in the car business. We'd need to maintain the cars here. We'd need to show them. We'd need to assist with people when they came to look at them. We would need to handle all aspects of the sale. For an additional 7.5% or a total of 12.5%, they will come, pick up the cars, they will flatbed them from here. They will clean them up, prepare them for sale, to get the maximum amount for them, and they'll handle the transaction from soup to nuts, and will be removed from that process. I think that's a much cleaner way for us to go. While we wear a lot of hats here, we're not car dealers. And I think for the slightly higher percentage, I think the town will see a better return, and obviously, better use of town resources to have these cars sold and maximize what we... the return we can get from them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Members of public wish to comment. Robert?
I like this idea. I mean, it beats Craigslist. You don't have to do anything, right? But whenever I see, particularly with all the things going on these days, where is it? Waive all applicable procurement code provisions. Why? I mean, we have that. Mr. Seah did a great job on it, on just wondering why. And just raise your hand if you have a relative in this particular company. Okay. But honestly, I mean, that doesn't make sense.
Noel Hollingsworth, I actually was looking forward to seeing our town administrator in his Y in print shirt, red shoes.
Talk real fast.
With a giraffe out there, the Cal Worthington style. If anyone's ever been to Los Angeles, they know who.
You want to see if he had another talent.
You know, saying, you know, "No credit, low credit, come on down." And this takes all the fun out of it. So, thank you.
Oh, God, I got a vision. That would be fantastic.
Mayor.
I'd love to see that, Keith.
Yeah, just to address the first thing. First, I'll address Newell's. The plan was the 5% until we changed the lights, and then he couldn't do the car dealership anymore. In regards to the procurement code issue that Bob brought up, first, we'd have to procure who would be the seller, which would, you know, Andy chose propertyroom.com. So, first, we'd have to go out for procurement, looking for anyone willing to sell the vehicles. Then we would have to follow the regulations as to offering it to all governmental entities first, not for profits, the whole list of how you go about selling them, you know, selling them, Dee, not donating them, you know. So, after that, in the six months of them still taking up half the parking spots at Town Hall, then they would finally be able to be sold. So, rather than that, the town said, "Let's waive the requirements, give it to propertyroom.com, who we've always already dealt with, and sell the vehicles, take the cash, and move on."
Where was the... Did that conclude public comment? I think I did. I'm still thinking Andy in red shoes. I think we've got a motion and a second to approve. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
We're good.
Okay. Call a question, please, Russell.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Breakus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 14, approval for minutes for the March 13, 2014 regular council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second approved. Just because I know you read them, I just want to make sure you don't have any issues with what's been recorded. Seeing no public comment. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Breakus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. I know we have a consensus. This meeting is hereby adjourned.